Thank you.
The six thirty, I'm gonna go ahead and start. Okay. Time being six thirty, I'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Participation, excuse me. If you'd like to speak to the council, please fill out a form and hand it to Shannon. Please indicate on the form if you wish to speak during the discussion on a specific agenda item. Remember, council members are not allowed to answer questions during the public participation. And please state your name and address for the record.
No, I have nobody signed up.
Thank you. Number one, Upper Trinity Regional Water District Report, Mr. Nola? You have a speech? No?
No.
Okay, alright. Number two, Denton County Emergency Service District Chief Vaughn?
Mayor, Council, thank you for having me.
Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you.
Glad to be here. Today was an exciting day. We had at the county commissioners court, the commissioners court, they appointed the new board members for the E S D two and for the E S D one, because we did have some, had some turnover for E S D one. For Bartonville, we had Jeff Grove and Donna Welsh. I think both of those are going to be assigned to two E S D two. So, so we have some representation. That was one of the goals. It was kind of agreed upon from the commissioners court is they wanted to try to, try to have more representation from each of the towns. And so that was, I think it's accomplished as best it could be. They will be sharing the president and the treasurer both boards to kind of keep some continuity, particularly in regard to the finances. So they are going to do that. But it was a big day. So we still have a, a board of commissioners meeting Thursday, and that'll be kind of the ones going out. We'll have a big kind of a gathering and kind of a celebration for them. And then in January, they'll actually do the swearing in of the new members. So the, the new members won't actually start till January, because the terms go from December thirty first, or start January first, and they'll do the swearing in then. So we'll have some celebration then as well, so. And of course, that night, they'll also, by statute, they have to do their nominating who's the treasurer and president and that kind of thing. They'll have to go through that process too. So a lot of formalities, I guess you might say. So got that to look forward to. Another big news for us is, you might recall several months ago, we reported that back in the spring, we put in for a federal grant for nine firefighter positions. And back in September, to our surprise, we were awarded that, which was a huge win for us to get basically some federal money for three years of salary plus benefits to basically increase our staffing more so than we really could afford to do. So it's going to increase that, our numbers up to where we should have a better minimum staffing. So with that, since September, we've been working. We put out two application processes to get enough numbers. We were able to get twenty seven qualified candidates, of which they've done all their background checks and gone through the process. And as of this morning, offered the nine, nine of them, a conditional offers employment, because they still have to do some physicals and drug tests, and a few other little minor things they gotta do. So we were able to get that done. So they will, hopefully, the plan is they get through the final process. They will be hired in January, January twentieth, actually, until we'll be able to get them on board. So very excited about that. In other news, we are starting some conversations with First Ranch, particularly in the Bartonville ETJ areas. We're looking at some fire protection. How is the fire protection coverage going to be in that in terms of fire stations? We'll be talking about that. We'll be looking at what was, where are our needs there? What are they looking to develop there? Are they looking just residential? There's looked to be almost near a thousand homes just in that area. We're not talking about the Flower Mountain portion, just the Bartonville, Argyle, ETJ areas. And they're talking about some multifamily, maybe senior living. And so there's a lot of things that are being discussed. And we're starting those conversations, because I want to be proactive in making sure that we provide adequate fire protection for that area. It does cover part of Bartonville, so it is important. Other than that, we're wrapping up our Santa tour going around. Last Thursday, we had the town hall at Bartonville. We did the Santa route with the fire truck, and that's always fun. That's, the neatest thing to me is, is getting behind or in front of the fire engine and watching the fires with all the lights on it turn the corner, and all the kids who, you know, know it's coming. And they finally see Santa. It's, it's a pretty, it's a sight to see. So I always enjoy that. So Thursday's our last one, so we're wrapping up. It's usually about a three week process. It's a, it's a grind. I will, I will go ahead and say that. But it's a lot of work, but it's a lot of fun. And so other than that, we've had a lot of other activities. I'm sure I'm forgetting. Megan probably would tell me when I'm doing wrong. But I'll take any questions you have. And other than that, just wish you guys a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And we have so much to be thankful for, everything we've been through this past year and being able to overcome all those things. We couldn't have done it without your support, and I just want to say thank you. That's correct. And they're offsetting. So some of them only get a one year term, and they'll, and they'll, and they'll have to be reappointed. So yeah, the statute, I don't have in front of me, but there is alternating terms, yes.
Keith, did you want to ask a question? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Police Department Statistics for November two thousand twenty-three, Chief Mitchell?
Oh, firefighter there. Good evening, Council. Good evening. I'll echo the same thing and wish everybody a Merry Christmas. So, and yes, we did have the fire truck that went through town last Thursday. That was awesome. So I tell you what. They sure did. They were excited to have that. I told them not to get in the way of the kids. They wouldn't. They weren't going to sit on Santa's lap or anything and stuff, so. So you all have the, the reported hand for the month of November, which shows our crime stats for that month. Nothing really critically impressive about that. Overall, over the last three years, we've been relatively flat with our total incidents. You'll notice there is just a, I'll call it a slight upward trend with total incidents over the last couple of months. A lot of these have to do with our officers are really out working hard, addressing some of the traffic concerns that had been expressed and stuff related to speeding, running stop signs, engaging in those types of activities and focusing heavily on that. Because it is a, it was an issue that we did see here in town with persons not paying attention to some of the speed limits and some of the stop signs we've put here in town. But we believe we're making an impact. We believe we're getting the message out there, so. And if there's anything in the report that y'all specifically have a question about, please feel free to ask. As we go through the report, a couple of other things that I wanted to point out, really, we're down on the miscellaneous events there on the last page. So I know we wrapped up our Blue Santa, and we supported twelve families and thirty-two children with, with the support of this community. So that was very wonderful. I also want to take and recognize some of the departmental milestones and recognize some of the achievements we've had over the last few months. I came on board here September twenty-fifth, and I want to start taking a look at some of the things we've implemented and made a couple of changes with. Understand, I'm not making a great number of changes, because I'm gonna say this again. Y'all have great people here at Bartonville. You have good, good police officers here. But just a couple of tweaks, putting fresh eyes on things, and a couple of those accomplishments. So, you know, here recently, we've had three citizen compliments come in on officers and stuff. Believe it or not, one of those was related to a mom whose son was stopped by one of our officers, and she wanted to thank the officer for stopping her son and his professionalism during the traffic stop. So that speaks very well. Sergeant Scudder was recognized as the Officer of the Month by four oh seven barbecue, which was very, which was very nice. And also Sergeant Scudder gained his Advanced Peace Officer certification, which is a huge accomplishment. As our state legislators continues to add every two years, thank goodness they only meet every two years, right? Every two years, they add additional requirements to the intermediate peace officer certification. If you haven't obtained those, or haven't got your advanced peace officer, you have to obtain those certifications prior to obtaining your advanced peace officer certification. Also want to point out that we've made several DWI arrests. I've asked our officers. We had that four oh seven corridor, and we have one officer in particular who likes to focus on DWIs. Now, it's an important thing that we do as law enforcement officers, because in addition to speeding, causing serious accidents, driving while intoxicated is the number two reason for motor vehicle accidents. So this officer's been out focusing on those, and we've had several DWI arrests over the last couple of months, particularly along the four oh seven corridor. We've also worked in that four oh seven area. We've been in the right place at the right time, stopped a theft in progress. That was occurring right there out of the Kroger. The officer's right there. It's good police work being where we know that these kind of offenses could likely occur, being in that area and focusing on that. Really wanting to keep any of these criminal elements from working their, working their way into the, the heart of Bartonville and to the town itself. So we can work those areas. We know we can make an impact. In addition to that, they actually, we stopped an individual who had a dangerous fugitive warrant for two armed robberies. Officers did, officers did that. And then I also wanted to point out a couple of other things we've done. We've had a complete now successful overhaul of our property room. We've now reviewed all of our policies in our property room. First of all, there weren't that many, there were just a couple things we had to catch up on our property room, but it is now in order, ready for when the new chief arrives here. Few of the things that we have is, as y'all recall, early on, quickly, we identified that our tasers were, the batteries are not correct in those. We made an, we made a quick kind of, I'll call it an interim adjustment to it, to get those to where they were on the newest technology related to batteries and stuff, battery life on it. But upon some further digging, it looks like those tasers are anywhere between ten to seven years old. So they're out of warranty. So y'all will hear me a little bit later on tonight, talking to y'all about the new Taser seven. And then based on some requests from speaking with our officers, talking to town staff, looking at some of the needs, there's some training requirements that our officers were needing, our officers were really desiring. And, and I'll say this, whenever you perform in whatever you do, you're going to perform at your lowest or at your highest level of training. So if you're not training very high, that's how you're going to perform. So training is very near and dear to my heart. And so I found a couple of cost effective ways to help our officers train. There's a couple of online platforms, working with THAD, we're able to implement. It's called the Lexipol Academy. And I just spoke with OSS, O S, OSS today, and we'll be working to implement that as well very soon. So they're two low cost ways for officers to get some very quality training, so. One other thing that I'll bring up, because I know it's, it was a practice, and it has to do with the way of, of looking at policing and being available to your community and, and working in your community. There was, there was a practice that was in place that required our officers basically to drive every roadway into every neighborhood twice in their shift. And that's what I got from talking to our officers. It was a, it wasn't in policy, where it was a practice. I removed that, because when you start looking at the town, we have twenty-five, basically twenty-five miles here in the town. You start doubling back on yourself. And I mean, just to drive twenty-five miles at thirty miles an hour, it takes about an hour and forty minutes. So you're doing that twice in your shift. You're rolling into over three hours in your shift, accounting for stop signs, accounting for calls for service. You get accounting one from one side of the town to the other. So, so what I've asked the officers to do is, when you get off in an area, you respond to a call for service somewhere. Take the opportunity after you finish up, look around those areas, patrol those streets and stuff. But make sure you're working your, to spend your time the best you can. If you've got traffic issues you need to enforce, make sure you're addressing those traffic problems in your areas. If you've got an area to where you know you have a problem with intoxicated persons on four oh seven, make, try to make yourself available in those locations. If you've got an area you know you have where traffic could back up, or you could have traffic concerns, make sure you're around those areas. If you have a, we just finished working, working a traffic complaint off of Bridle Bit. At Latigo, I think was the other road. We spent two weeks out there. We determined that probably what we had out there was a, an observation that people felt people were speeding more than they were. We actually only had two citations that were issued at the location to the same person. Yeah. Yeah. So, so we will work those kind of things, but those kind of things take man hours to work. And I know it's important that we want to be visible in our neighborhoods. I understand the visibility component of it. But you want to be visible where you can get the greatest visibility. So if you're on our main roadways primarily, that should you get the greatest visibility. If you're in our parking lots and our shopping centers where our residents shop, that should you get a great visibility. And then look at those, the, what I call the residential roadways and stuff, where to be honest, we get our fewest amount of calls, with exception of maybe alarm calls and the occasional domestic or backing up on a medical call. So that was kind of, that was kind of the take I had coming in and looking at the way they were policing here, so. So, and that's my report this evening.
Thanks again for everything you've done for the town. We really appreciate you filling in. Number four, Town Administrator, November two thousand twenty-three, report Financial and Patrol Code Enforcement Engineering Municipal Port and Permits. Board member attendance. That?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Merry Christmas. Still get tired of hearing that. But again, it is that time. And again, we're finishing out a great year here in Bartonville. If you'll take, turn to page twenty-two, that's the start of your financial reports. Two months into the fiscal year is what we're looking at. Not a whole lot of trending is going to be seen, but you will be able to start tracking a little bit. So page twenty-three is actually the first numbers you see. With almost seventeen percent of the fiscal year represented, we'd like to see less than eighty-three percent left to collect, except for property taxes. We won't see those roll in until January, February reports. Sales taxes, again this year, even though we increased our projection for the year, they're still running ahead of projections. Business is good. Franchise fees, the mayor and I had a long conversation about franchise fees, you know, because we were both going, why are they going up so much? Well, all these lines that are going in our rights of way, they have to pay the city for franchise fees. So again, as we see more of those lines running down the right, rights of way, those fees will continue to increase. So I'll probably do a better year, a better job projecting this for next budget cycle. So now a better understanding of it. Development fees, again, that one's zero. That only comes into play whenever we get a subdivision, so that one's pulled out. Should that subdivision that we're anticipating off of East Jeter come in, that will probably hit that number. And then, but a cost associated will almost balance out. Permit fees, healthy as well. We have, the houses that are going up on the five acre and the two acre lots are not small, and permit fees are based on size. So our permits continue to be a very healthy number. Construction has not stopped. And then municipal court, again, we greatly increased the projection on that, but it still is exceeding projections. We had ninety-eight citations last month, if you look in your reports issued. So again, kind of echoing what the chief was talking about, but we're busy. But to the point that some people make on this issue, the municipal court revenues is about, they're accountable for about three and a half percent of our entire budget. That's it. And the costs associated with that almost equal it out. So it's not a generate, revenue generating source for the town. Our officers are out there trying to change behavior. That's what they're doing with the citations. They're trying to get compliance with the stop signs with cyclists and the speeders coming through town. So again, a lot of people, oh, it's a big revenue. It's really not. It's really not, so.
Age old soundbite.
Yes. Do y'all have any questions on the general fund revenues? Again, we're, we're in pretty decent shape. If you look at page twenty-four and twenty-five, exact same numbers. I just changed the X axis. I had been building off the twelve month rolling average that was here when I got here. Well, you know, you've got this whole black area underneath. It's kind of useless. It, it shows that that doesn't move very much. If you look at page twenty-five, you can see more clearly, when I shrink that X axis, that movement. When I talked about that it usually at that quarter, it dips, and then it starts back up. You can see that trend a little more clearly in that second graph. Again, same information, just different scale. Do you have any questions? General fund expenditures, again, we'd like to see a little over eighty-three percent remaining available. We don't have that in court. We're okay on everything else. We're running dockets of thirty and forty people. So the prosecutor is costing a little more for that process, and then the judge may end up costing more. He hasn't come back yet. But those are, the time it's taking in court is significantly longer, because the dockets are growing, so. Quite large. Do you have any questions on this part of it? Now, I've talked to the mayor. Y'all know I always have the detail here. If you have any specific questions, we've talked about putting this in the packet twice a year, so that y'all have this and can go through. But it's always in my office, or I can send it to you if you requested. I just don't want to bog down here with us getting off into the weeds, but I've always got it for you, because it's your money. And if you want to know exactly where it's going, it's right here.
Looked at it all summer, pretty much.
About mid-year.
Again, in March or something like that, whatever. Don't want to.
Especially when I come from mid-year budget adjustment or something like that, we can go down and dig into it. Do you have any questions on general fund expenditures for admin? All right, now, my next, that was my full. Sorry, that was all general fund. I apologize. The administration is on your next page, page twenty-seven. Again, we're in decent shape on all accounts. Supplies are running a little hot, but not that much. Again, it's hard to trend two months in. Most of that is computer, both for general fund and for the police on the next page. Most of that is for the new computers we've purchased.
I also have not transferred over to the tech, from the tech fund yet to replace the general fund from the last action.
Yes.
Police, if you look at that one on, was it page twenty-eight? This one, our maintenance is running hot, and it's actually running a lot hotter than that. We just had to replace a motor in a police vehicle.
Do we order a new, new Tahoe?
We do have a new Tahoe. I don't have a projection on when it's going to be in yet. We were talking about March. I'll find out for you, and I'll send out an update. But yes, we ordered a new Tahoe. But we had a lifter stick, flatten the cam, shavings in the motor. So.
Piles didn't have one.
Hundred and six thousand.
Alright.
But it still could have been found. Little misinformation came from the top to our officers over the last couple of years about a tick sound. Now we make sure we explore all sounds that come from the motor. It's not necessarily a Tahoe tick. It may be a lifter. So the motor, it's fifteen thousand dollars, so that's going to eat up most of the maintenance budget for the entire year. It does come with a three year, thirty-six thousand mile warranty, so that, that vehicle will last us another three to four years.
Your model Tahoe, was it? Which one? Do you remember?
I do not remember. It's the, it's one of our newer ones, though. It's, again, still a hundred and six thousand. We've got a brand new one, and that was the next newest, which I think was a eighteen.
We got a second opinion, just to be.
Yes, we got, we started at Firestone right here in Bartonville, and it's being replaced, though, at Christian Brothers. So again, that was, and we now have, Officer Wood is maintaining the fleet. He's actually keeping all records very knowledgeable, and he's going to make sure that we're taking care of every, your assets, so that we're not having to do this very often. But again, we'll get a lot more use out of that vehicle as we continue to replace the fleet as it reaches those milestones. But again, it's got a new motor in it with a good warranty. So again, that's, that's the biggest change you're going to see there. I do plan on taking that item to Crime Control. That is an eligible expense, and to see if they will fund that and reimburse the general fund. Yes. Yes, sir. Do you have any other questions there? That's it. And again, the court report, if you look at that, again, ninety-eight citations. That's it. And again, the court report, if you look at that, again, ninety-eight citations, traffic violations in one month. So our officers are out there working to change behaviors so that your streets are safer and easier to get out of your drives on.
It's a while.
Y'all don't have anything else? That's all my reports, Mayor.
I just want to thank everybody for participating in the red kettle challenge. Came in so far, we're second behind Highland Village. We beat, so far we're ahead of Louisville and Flower Mound.
Oh, my goodness.
So Chief, you can rub that in over there.
Sorry, Mayor. What did she say about Highland Village?
I'm sorry?
Will we stand with Highland Village?
We're, we're ahead of Highland Village and Flower Mound both in the red kettle challenge.
Oh, that's great.
Louisville was ahead of us by four hundred dollars when we last figures we saw.
It was a good day. At least it didn't rain.
Yeah, it was fun. It was fun.
And the year before it was cold.
Okay, thank you. Consent agenda. This agenda consists of non-controversial housekeeping items required by law. Items may be approved with a single motion. Items may be removed from the consent agenda by a council member by making such a request prior to a motion and a vote on a consent agenda. Number one, consider approval of the November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve consent agenda on the moment.
Second.
Second.
All of them favored. Motion carries five to zero. F, public hearings and action items due to the proximity of our property to the subject's property in the next agenda item, council member Sams and I will be recusing ourselves for the duration of the item. Agenda item. Mayor Pro Tim Chapman will be leading the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right. Item number one, discuss and consider a preliminary plat for an eighty-one point seven eight nine acre tract of land situated in the AM Felte survey abstract number one, five, nine, four. And the Daniel Cook survey abstract number two, three, zero in the town of Bartonville, Denton County, Texas. Tract of land is located on the north side of East Jeter Road, approximately two thousand sixty-three feet north of its intersection with Porter Road in Bartonville, Texas. The applicant, Makowski Associates, on behalf of Rob Knight. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of vote five to zero. It's December sixth, two thousand twenty-three meeting staff presentation, Thad.
Thank you, Mayor Portem. To clarify that, it was also, the vote was five oh for approval with conditions. I apologize. We didn't put that in the staff report. And those conditions are included here. So if the motion is to include those conditions, you will have them here. This is, as stated in the title block, this is eighty-one point seven eight nine acres, the old turkey farm right there off of Jeter Road. This is a preliminary plat. So this is very early and it's ministerial. It's not the site plan where you really get into the detail or even the final plat. So there's not a lot for us to review here, but there are certain conditions that need to be met for a preliminary plat. So let's see lot size. The reason this is not being done as a minor plat, because minor plats can be done for four or fewer lots. It will include a public water line. So it has to create an easement for a public utility. That eliminates it from being considered as a minor plat. That, that category alone. Again, it's right at the crook, right there. As you go north on Jeter before you go west after that first bend, it's right there where the big barn is. It is one large track currently. Go ahead, keep going. Criteria for evaluation conforms with approved land study. It's served off a minor collector. The public water line easement is accounted for in the preliminary plat. And it is proportionate to available services. Again, the, the lots range from, I think, eleven acres to forty acres or something like that. It's, they're.
Thirty-eight or thirty-six.
Yeah, they're, they're. They're big lots. Layoffs have required public improvements and town utilities have been approved by the town engineer. That'll be reviewed at final plat with the construction plans. And then the conditions of approval related to utilities and easements. Again, we'll cover those in a second. Conforms to applicable zoning and other regulations. It's ag zoning. Each lot is greater than ten acres. Although it's land use plan for RE two, we cannot compel the owners to take on that, or RE five, excuse me. We cannot compel, sorry. All right. Everybody's. Now that we're all away, the land use plan has RE five in that location, but we cannot compel them to rezone as long as it meets current zoning and it does with the split. And then again, they do know that they will have onsite sewage facilities that will all be septic.
So you're saying it will remain agricultural.
Zoning, yeah.
Zoning, yes. That's which work is that's the minimum ten acres to have the agricultural zone.
Exactly. If they had anything less than they could do the RE five as land use plan. But again, their desire was to keep it very big and open through there with the four lots. And again, the P N Z recommendation was approved with conditions. Those conditions are listed one through eight. And again, these are all detail oriented. I can go through them if you would like me to, if you haven't read them. And again, this is just basically, they need to make sure they have their offsite drainage easement depicted on the preliminary plat. Again, there's a, it's a technical issue that Ryan, our planner, talks about. Easements established via this plat. It's a statement they actually have to put on there so that as that plat is filed, that actually establishes those easements of record. They need to set their building lines. Their building lines are not currently shown on the preliminary plat. Again, built existing building locations must be marked. We will not approve a final plat that creates conflicts with basically non-conforming uses.
Setbacks and such.
Yes. If you're within the setbacks, then you've got a problem. So those buildings would need to be removed or the lines changed for the final plat. Again, the title block, approval block is number five. We do need to see the, before a final plat, we need to see the location of the onsite septic and a Lisa or sanitary and we'll review that. Engineering construction plans set shall accompany the final plat. So again, Steve will review all that as will the town engineer where, as needed. And then a ten foot utility easement along the side and length of the private road. So again, recommendation from staff to council or to P N Z was to recommend approval or to recommend the recommendation to you. Been a long two days.
RE two thing threw you off, didn't it?
Did that come out of my mouth? I can't believe this.
By our ordinances, the setback for for would be fifty.
Fifty feet.
Now that would be for agricultural.
It's still at fifty feet in the agricultural district.
So what if it was RE five? Cause I thought RE five is seventy-five feet.
I think it's fifty. I'd have to go back and look specifically.
Okay.
But yeah.
But as it stands today, it, the fifty feet conforms.
Yes.
All right.
And again, the recommendation from P N Z was the council approval with that list of one through eight conditions.
A council discussion?
Too much to discuss. I mean, it, it conforms and it's just a preliminary plat. I mean, we, we're going to have another crack at this thing down the road.
It's RE five and they're doing ten plus acres. The people of this town will be very happy. We're having less development.
Absolutely. I got no complaints with it.
Great. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve item one as presented with conditions.
One second.
Thank you. All those. It passes four zero.
Thank you, Council. All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Back. It's all yours.
Um, this agenda item number two. Discuss and consider prelim, prelim, preliminary for preliminary plat. For a ninety-nine point seven four four acre tract of land situated in the AR loving survey abstract number oh, seven, three, six, A. Tracks five, five, A, six and seven, A in the town of Bartonville, Denton County, Texas. The tract of land is located on the west side of FM four oh seven, directly opposite the intersection of FM four oh seven and Razor Road in Bartonville. The applicant is C C M engineering on behalf of education leads to success foundation, planning and zoning commission recommended approval five zero. It's December sixth meeting.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The same applies to that last sentence. I did not update it correctly. It was recommended approval with conditions. And again, those conditions are listed in the agenda item. Similarly to the last item, this is a preliminary plat. There will still be a final plat, site plan and construction documents for review. This one looks a lot different because it's been going on for a long time and it's a school. So I included that traffic impact analysis, just to let council know we are, we're, we're taking a very hard look at this only for safety of the children. To make sure that coming off of four oh seven, we don't have buses interacting in such a way that it causes an issue. So we, that's why the engineer, town engineer required the traffic impact analysis. So I'm not going to dig deep into that unless y'all have specific questions. But again, if you'll start going through, are you already there? Are you following what I'm talking about and just scrolling? Again, this is for the construction eventually of the education leads to success academy. The school location, I think this has been going on since before I got here, I know. So it's been a little over two years. But before they can construct, they've looked at options of creating two parcels, three parcels, various looks at this. They've decided to replat it the entire hundred acres into one lot. Again, a school is permitted in every zoning district. So again, being in the agricultural district and being a school, it complies with our zoning. Again, it was located on four original tracks, but they had to plat before they construct. So again, that was where they weren't sure how they were going to go for a while. It is offset, but opposite of the razor road intersection. Again, we know future, there will be a light there constructed by text dot. But it is an offset. So we're not sure how that's going to look yet. So as part of the traffic impact analysis, you'll see, would you go to the next one? As part of the traffic impact analysis, they are required to create a second entrance. If you can look up on the, the screens and it has to be twenty-four feet wide. You'll see that in your conditions. They are also being required to cut a median, basically a turn lane off of four oh seven into that second entrance. North side. Yeah. The, the straight one, the one on this bottom of the page or south side is the original entrance now with all of the CJ's legacy. That area right there and the second entrance would be north of that. And again, we're talking about running this, this traffic impact analysis was run at worst case scenario. They basically, their business model is bring everybody in by bus. And everybody leaves by bus, which again, you, you don't need but five or six or seven buses for that. We made them run it at, there's an incident and every parent shows up. So we made them run those numbers such that if three hundred and ninety parents showed up, how would you handle that traffic? So we're looking at really worst case scenario for the situation.
Thad, you said both would have right turn lanes, correct?
No, only the north.
Okay. So they're going to go in one and come out the other?
How they flow that, again, that'll come later.
Okay.
We don't know exactly which one they can both be in and they can both be out because they have to be twenty-four feet wide for the fire trucks.
Is to satisfy the requirement of having both an entrance and an exit or two entrances to the property. Is that correct?
Two entrances. And again, they couldn't, they, because they're offset from razor, that's not a, you can't make that a four-way stop right there with the light condition. So we had to move them away from that intersection and create a safer place for them to go in on the north. It's just.
It was a hundred and twenty-one foot distance between the two of them. Does that satisfy?
That satisfies text dot.
Okay.
And again, they still have to get text dot permitting for that. That's just one of the conditions included in there. So again, and then the flood study as well that was included in this, there's a lot of floodway in there and they were going to have to address that. What go up on? Please. There you can see all of the changes. So again, our land study, we did have them do a traffic impact analysis, left turn D cell lane at drive two. The flood study, again, they had to show no adverse impacts. And they, that is included in the conditions for approval. A conditional letter of map revision will have to be done with FEMA. That's the clomer and presented to us before the final plat. Go, go ahead. Keep going. Confirm, conforms to zoning and regulations. Yes. Again, again, it's going to be a hundred acre lot, single lot. Schools are permitted there. They just have to meet our rural business building standards. And then onsite sewage facilities, that's part of the conditions for approval. Because again, you're going to have to have a very sizable septic field and Annalisa will need to review that for functionality. And here are the conditions for approval. Again, the fire lane easement should be minimum of twenty-four feet wide with thirty feet on the inside turn. Driveway two will be associated with drive aisle. Again, this was from the impact analysis. They can basically label that as private access road, but we also recommend that they identify it as a fire lane. Driveway two shall be served by left turn bay cut on the median. Again, that's going to require text dot construction permit to complete that. And then prior to the final plat proposal location of the onsite, onsite septic. Again, we need to make sure it's not in the floodway. Anywhere near where it can be impacted by flood conditions or anything other easements across that property. Again, that's number five as well. They, they have to do the clomer with FEMA. Final plat shall, they can, general note that reads zone A E flood plain and floodway shall be maintained and shall remain free of obstructed, obstructive debris by the property owner in accordance with Bartonville code ordinances. We are again requiring complete engineering construction plans with the final plat. Number eight was added by planning and zoning. The, it's kind of a strange wording on that. We want them to rerun the traffic impact analysis showing turning exhibit for wheelbase fifty feet. Vehicle, that's the buses. We want to make sure that they have that included as well. To make sure that those are safe, safe turns. Again, if, if you've read the traffic impact analysis, it's hard to, those are a little hard to read. The background traffic already basically has most of our intersections in this area as F failing because it takes so long at peak hours to get through McMakin or those other lights. So that's the background traffic. We can't force this development to make that better. When they're not expected to make it worse and they're, they're expected to handle their, what they create by building the school there. So again, the median cut would be paid for by the property owner, not the town. But again, it's already, the traffic's already pretty bad there and we do have lights going in in the near future at IT Neely and Razor Road. So again, planning and zoning commission looked at this, recommended approval or made a recommendation to council for approval with those conditions, one through eight. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. And again, this is preliminary plat. We'll see a final, final plat, site plan and construction before approved.
Discussion question.
You stated that all the children would be brought in by bus and leave by bus. Oh, but I mean, so there's no private cars. The parents aren't bringing the children to the school or?
That's not anticipated. And again, that's the information we received from the people doing the school. They have other schools. That's why we still had them run it with the, those other numbers, though. So again, it's that, that's their business model. Hard for us to dig into it, but we can make them run worst case scenario. What if everybody has to show up? And that's what we did.
Said the a school is allowed on.
a school is allowed on agricultural zoning. But our land use plan, that's R E two. So even if it, it, that goes for that as well?
It goes for that as well.
Okay.
Ed, would you? Okay.
I mean rural business.
But it needs to meet rural business standards for construction.
It's not.
Right.
Land use.
Okay.
Right. Right.
Have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve uh item number two with conditions as it's stated.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, counsel. Number three, conduct a public hearing, can consider resolution adopting ratifying plat application, submit a list posting requirements set forth by new legislation, House Bill thirty-six ninety-nine. Thad?
Two seconds, please, to get to that item. I apologize, I was shuffling papers. Okay, uh, sorry. Thank you, Mayor, Council. As Chief said, uh, you know, every other year is a great year in Texas and then all those off years of legislature meets. Cause they always create something for us to do. Uh, House Bill thirty-six ninety-nine was passed uh this last session and became law September one. Uh, what this requires us to do is have a complete written list of all documentation and other information that is required to submit a plat application. Um, fortunately, thi- this is really kind of a backstop. It's not required, but it's best that y'all approve this. We already have all of this on our website. So we were in compliance long before it came into uh fact, but it's one of those things to have this shows uh the town's effort. That was the traffic impact analysis engineer, in case there were any specific questions. Um, so again, this is a, we're showing the town's full effort uh to comply with thirty-six ninety-nine by passing this resolution stating that one, we've already done it, but that we'll keep it that way, that we will uh make our plat process transparent and on, and place it on our website. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Just need a resolution. We've, we already.
No, I have a choice. I mean, we got to do this, so.
And again, it's not going to cause any more work because we're, we're there.
We'll do a public hearing. Okay. Uh, time being seven sixteen, uh, open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak in favor? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition? Time being seven sixteen on calls a public hearing. Discussion. Motion.
Move that we approve. Resolution adopting and ratifying plat application, submit a list posting requirements set forth by new legislation, House Bill thirty-six ninety-nine.
Second.
All those in mo- in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, counsel. Number four, discuss and consider approval of a resolution accepting the town's investment policy for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. Thad, you're up again.
Uh, this is an annual requirement. We uh, we've had this same policy since two thousand nineteen. We don't run a lot of exotic investments. Everything is currently sitting, uh, it's indexed at uh independent financial. Again, we had that discussion about mid-year last year when they finally did index us and made whole uh that time period, which was not indexed. And that was the big influx of interest that we saw during that last fiscal year. Um, so again, we're not making any recommendations. There may come a time where I ask y'all if y'all want to do something exotic, but that's really uh with the amount of money we have, doing that doesn't make a lot of sense. If we had tens of millions of dollars in our reserve funds because we're a major city, parking that at uh independent financial at five point three percent might not be the best return for you, but as a conservative community with, again, the, the funds we have, I think that's probably one of our best bets. Again, it meets all the goals of the investment policy uh that we have now. And Shannon and I just finished our public funds investment training and this policy meets all of those things that are required by the state law. Will I answer any questions?
There have been no written changes to the policy from the prior year to this year.
None.
So it's basically the same agreement that we approved last.
Same policy.
I did fix a misspelled word, but everything else is the same.
Scribners errors.
Full disclosure.
Okay.
I'll move to approve a resolution accepting the town's investment policy for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, counsel. Number five, discuss and consider appointments to the Bartonville Community Development Corporation, including consideration of removing a member due to absenteeism. Shannon?
Thank you, Mayor. I haven't said it yet, so Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas.
And this is one of the parts of my job, but it's my duty to inform you of absences of our appointed officials. We have started putting the attendance report in your monthly reports at the beginning. I did go back to last fiscal year so you could get a bigger picture of what was going on with the B C D C Corporation. And so our Code of Ordinances, section one point zero four dot zero zero three states that three consecutive absences shall constitute grounds for removal for cause. So I needed to bring this forward to you to allow you to see the um absentee rate, what was going on. I did speak to the um official in um that we're talking about and he did um give, tell me that he did desire to stay on. He had some issues and he said that those are rectified now. But as I was putting this together from last fiscal um all of October, he did, he has missed seven of the twelve meetings. So I wanted to let you know, tell you that he went, did want to stay on, but it is up to you and it's your decision to decide if you're going to let him stay on, if you wanted to have any stipulations or if you wanted to remove him.
Notify the Chair of this committee of his absences in advance or what was going on or anything like that.
Sir, um, what we do, just like we do for the council agenda packets, I do email them out and I do ask you to let me know if there's a quorum or whatnot. If we do hear that we, based on my replies that we have a quorum, I don't move further than that. But in the last couple of months, I did have to call and leave messages and those messages were not returned.
I think you, did you email him also?
Email, called, yes.
Voicemail. Nothing. And we didn't know if he was, we didn't know.
Yeah, he was surprised that uh, we were surprised that he attended the last meeting and I did let him know that this was coming up on council.
Was the situation, I mean, did, did you get details on me? Is this?
Personal situation? Wasn't work related?
Yeah. He said it was rectified.
And they need five at the meetings, is that right? To vote, what's the quorum?
There are seven members, so quorum is four.
Four, okay. Okay.
What about the? What are the other members of that committee? How, how they communicated to you regarding this absentee issue? I just want to know what their thoughts are. Do they have any?
It was not discussed at the love, at the board level.
Okay.
Well, I haven't received any feedback either. Again, when we have a quorum, there's usually not a lot of discussion on.
And you don't have trouble communicating with anybody else?
Um, sometimes we have to leave messages for other ones as well and they do not return. Some of them will, some of them won't.
Seption.
No.
Okay.
Did this individual ever take the initiative to call prior to the meeting and say, hey, I'm not going to be able to make it? No notification whatsoever on all three times?
Seven times.
Seven out of twelve.
Yeah.
Since I've been here in June, I have not gotten any communication that somebody will be missing a meeting on that board. No.
I've got great people here and I, they, they really do a great service for the community, but sometimes it is difficult to whip up a quorum. I know everybody's busy. Um, but uh, again, we're trying to do the town's business. Those boards meet on the same day, same time every month. And so uh, again, we, we, we try hard to contact them to make sure that they're reminded because I know everybody gets busy. Um, but again, we can't do your town's business if we don't get those quorums. They haven't missed one yet, but sometimes we've been down to the wire calling people and waiting.
Thank you. I think that's something to remind people too is just at the beginning of each year when we start these boards over and we have new appointees and in October, just tell everybody, please let us know, we have to have quorums. Please let us know if you're not going to be able to make it. So.
See, I'm kind of old school, but I think that if you understand that you took an oath and you volunteered to serve, that you step up to the plate and at least let those know around you that are counting on your presence that you cannot make it. And to have seven or twelve shows that, I know there's mitigated circumstances, but no notification at all is unacceptable because there is a degree of responsibility that each one of us takes upon doing this service. And you know, I have a problem accepting the fact that there was no notification to any of the other fellow members. That's my personal statement.
Been on that committee since oh six?
No.
Twenty-two.
He's, and, and the attendance shows his complete term. He started October twenty-two.
Okay.
It's, I agree with what Clay said. It's, it's tough not knowing. It's tough to make a decision on that for, to, to for somebody that's volunteering their service and trying to do something to help and then, you know, unpaid job and not understanding the situation of what it may have caused someone. I don't want to add to that stress that they're having personal problems in their life. But at the end, if there is personal stuff going on, maybe it might not have time for this anyway.
And time dealing with what he needs to deal with and then come back at a later time.
Yeah. Does somebody want to make a motion? Regarding that?
See, alright. Well, that's the recommend, that's not really a motion. So we're making a motion to remove. Alright. Um, I'll make a motion to remove the member who has three un-consecutive, unexplained absences on B C D C.
Yeah, let me make you say his name. I need to say the member's name for absenteeism.
We'll make a motion to remove James Kenner for absenteeism from B C D C.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries possibly. Number six, discuss and consider approval of a resolution appointing new members to the Bartonville Community Development Corporation. Shannon?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure what you're going to, the action that was going to be taken during the first, the previous agenda item. We do have this in front of you. There are now two vacancies on the Bartonville Community Development Corporation. We have received two applications. There was a vacancy left over at the annual appointment process. We just did not have enough volunteers to apply at that time. So staff did keep it open until Friday, December eighth. And we wanted to bring it forward to you because they are operating with one vacancy now with two. So it might be a little bit more difficult, but we do have two applications. And please note, if you're going to appoint both of them, we'll, we have one vacancy that expires in two thousand twenty-five and one that will expire in two thousand twenty-four. So we will need to make sure that you state a person for which term, if you so choose to appoint these applicants.
So in the names of the people are?
Are Jennifer Buck and Lacy Burris. The applications are in the packet.
Okay.
And the positions are uh are they the uh alternate positions or? Or we'll have to?
Sonic. We do not have.
You don't have alternates?
On that board.
Okay. Alright.
Um, James Kenner, the one that you just removed, he, his um position would be expiring in the two thousand twenty-four. And then the other vacancy that was left by um Dwayne Skyrock when he did not reappoint. Thank you. So it'd be a two thousand twenty-five.
Okay.
Okay, so we need to make a nomination for one for, to expire in two thousand twenty-four and the other one, twenty twenty-five.
So we need two separate nominations, Ed?
Is it?
It is the most clear way to do it.
Okay. Uh, I'll make a nomination to appoint uh Jennifer Buck to the vacancy for two thousand twenty-five. I'm sorry.
Both of them, both, you both did? I'll give mine to town.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Second motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend Lacy Burris for terms expire in two thousand twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Have a second? All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Ken. Number seven, discuss and consider an agreement with M H M W H Group for external auditing services for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three and authorize the town administrator to execute the same on behalf of the town. Thad?
Um, this is the same firm that y'all have utilized, uh, I guess the year prior uh before my arrival and we used them last year. Um, they're familiar with our systems and our bookkeeping. Uh, we do have this budgeted because we knew it was going to go up uh a lot uh for the audit. Um, so again, this is a budgeted item. I like using firms that are familiar with our, our systems. Um, and so I recommend that y'all approve this, but I'll answer any questions you may have.
Only question?
My side of this?
Yeah, twenty-two, five.
Okay.
My only question was your recommendation because you deal with them so directly, so.
Yes.
How much did they go up from last year?
I think it was eight. Um, but they warned us that they were going to be going up a lot, that there was a kind of a, they'd already set up their prices before everything went crazy on costs. No, we budgeted twenty-two, five to, because they, we weren't sure how much they were going to go.
Number, the fourteen, five.
Fourteen to eighteen is what.
Still is going to have gone up a hundred percent.
Yes.
Nothing's cheap.
No, it's actually, uh, we looked at a couple of others that were running twenty-five and thirty. Ask me questions.
I make a motion that we accept uh item number seven as stated uh that the town administrators to execute on behalf of the town.
All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Number eight, discuss and consider a master services and purchasing agreement with Axon Enterprises Inc. for the purpose of tasers and associated equipment in the amount not to exceed seventeen thousand five hundred and twenty-six and authorize the town administrator to execute the same on behalf of the town. Chief Mitchell?
Good evening again, counsel. Um, a- as I mentioned previously and earlier on, um, I, when I initially came in here, I took a look at a lot of the equipment as you're, actually, I've gone through all the equipment here and one of them that came to mind was taser, which was out of warranty. Uh, we made an interim adjustment to that by purchasing new batteries, but the device itself is still out of the warranty. Um, this is a tool that officers carry. It is a uh, it is great for not only preventing injury to the officer, if it has to be used, but actually preventing injury to individuals who have to be detained. And it's also, as I mentioned in here, it's also a de-escalation tool, just the mere presence of a taser can de-escalate a situation. Um, what I'm asking here is for us, and it's something that's new to the town. This, this looks like it's called the Taser sixty program and it looks like a lease, but it's really not. It's a five-year purchase of the devices, uh, which is concurrent with the warranty period for uh the taser. So we would actually have that seventeen thousand uh five twenty-six would be paid out over a period of five years at three thousand five hundred and five dollars per year. Now there would be, if, if somebody has to utilize one, there's an additional cost with purchasing cartridges to replace uh those that are utilized. Uh, this would get y'all current with what I say is one of the um, having some familiarization with taser uh and actually Axon Enterprise. This will um get y'all with one of the those tech launchy advanced tasers they have on the market outside of the taser ten, which I'm not recommending that any Texas agencies transition to that right now until some stat, till some uh, the legislature gets something in order with the way firearms are defined in the state of Texas. Uh, we do have two individuals already on staff here who are instructors for taser that can actually do the certification for this taser as well. So that's my recommendation to transition to uh this device, so.
Chief, is this the one, how many prongs are on this uh taser?
Yeah, I can, um, this one's a, this one allows individuals to make a determination whether you're dealing with a suspect who is twenty-one feet out or somebody who's much closer to you and you can. And you can select, you have a selection to fire probes that are designed to go a further distance or probes that are designed to, to deal with somebody much more close than that and stuff. So that's, that's the advantage to the taser seven. Also, what this will do is doing the master services agreement, we're going to be, our equipment now is going to be cataloged on with taser. So we can go back and look and actually it's easier to keep up with our devices, look at the number of deployments that we've had. We have a deployment. We can also go back and look at when these were purchased, how long the warranty period last on it. Getting. When you utilize this type of equipment, you use Axon Enterprise, they're, they provide a lot of great back office support as well, which is also, I think is very important when you're dealing with this kind of technology. So.
That turn off after so many seconds of deployment?
Absolutely. Going forward after the, the incident with vinyls battery taser now implements that in all of their devices now. So.
Seconds?
Five seconds. Yeah.
What's the estimated useful life of the user? Do we know yet?
The estimate, the ones you currently have, I think they, I'm, I feel confident they still work, but the device is out of warranty. So if something goes. If you have an incident and let's say we have a subject, we have to use that on and that subject was to pass away. My concern would be we no longer have the support of taser related to that device. I mean, that's going to back that device.
Seven years?
Five years, five years. It's called the taser seven. I don't know why they named it that. They have the taser M twenty-six. They have the taser X two. They have the taser seven and the taser ten. So.
Perspective? Okay. That's.
For me. Any other questions? Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a motion?
Make a motion to recommend that we enter into a purchasing agreement to acquire six Axon taser sevens. I don't think I need to add anything else.
Favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Captain. Thank you, Chief. Close session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Chapter five five one. Town council will meet closed executive section in accordance with the Texas Government Code. Number one, section five five one point oh seven one, consultation with town attorney to seek legal. Advice of its attorney regarding legal issues related to the town's extraterritorial jurisdiction, issues related to the first ranch development and any, and all legal issues related thereto. And. Council member Crandall, you'll recuse yourself, I'm guessing. Okay.
Accuse myself.
Okay, thank you. And so, number two. Section five five one point oh seven one, consultation with town attorney to seek legal advice and its attorney concerning pending. Or contemplated litigation regarding sanitary sewer nuance nuisance at twelve eighty-seven Gibbons Road, town of Bartonville, Texas. Versus Paul Harvey cause number two-three dash one-one four-two-nine dash four-six-seven pending in the four hundred and sixty-seventh District Court of Denton County. Time being seven thirty-seven. We're now in convened in a closed session.
I'll come get you after we're done.
Unless they change, when I looked at the plans alone, there was like a highlight. It's about, I guess, they're, they're going high. They're going to go land down and see a lot of fun. Well, I mean, when I know the town's negotiated an agreement with them, I don't know. I accuse myself. Well, they tried the next level of plan.
Yeah, that did more.
Maybe they're like, alright, get ready for a loss. Essentially, their plan, it's going to be a sudden down task. They're running all the utilities on the. These guys have been running all over the pasture. I'm like, look, you run over one of my cats, that's too grand. I, I knew that going in. I'm the first year, my second place. So January starts my second year, three years. So technically, I've got, they have to give me sixty-day notice. They haven't been bad to deal with, but I know rich people and when they want something, they don't care what's documented. So they want, they tell them they want their own barns, they want. I've got a couple of places I can show. Yeah, the first property they're developing that, my apartment, the other ones, three hundred neighbors I've got, and like our elves.
I mean, it's, it's just.
Well, this happened, I read already the other day, they said by the year twenty-one.
Worry about that one.
Well, it's.
See you guys.
Okay, just leave it out there. Or if you got a video, also did it up there. So just leave it on there. Okay. Alright.
You ready?
Well, look, they're all gone.
Do I? I wasn't out here to entertain you.
That's.
Oh. This is supposed to be down here to keep it.
Ah, okay.
So, time being eight thirteen, we're reconvening back into a regular session. No action taken? Future agenda items, are there any items coming up to add on the agenda for January?
We will have probably PNC items stepping forward. Andy, the frozen custard is applying for CUP signs will go up at the end of the week as is swig. So, drink, stand on drink shop, so those items will be in January.
I just want to give a little public acknowledgement to the special events committee and to administrative and police staff. Over the last few weeks of the 50th anniversary, the tree lighting, all the other things, so they've they've done a great job, top to bottom, and appreciate it, so.
Really good job, thank you.
We're just doing our job, y'all got a great community.
We're a fine group, aren't we?
Most of the time, y'all are, absolutely.
Most of the time.
We get an A for effort anyway, don't we?
Y'all get an A plus for effort.
Okay, that's all that matters.
Time being eight fifteen, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, everyone.